...according to the budget portion. And with no further ado, Rin, Dr. Brown, are you starting with nutrition?
I am.
Good.
All right, I will use the PowerPoint. And if you picked up one of these on your way in, it does include the new slides from tonight. So this is not the old one, this is the new one. Richard, anyone? Anybody else?
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay. What we're going to try to do this evening is to go through some of the presentations fairly quickly. So we need lots of time for the audience and school committee to ask questions and debate. I'm hoping that by the end of this meeting, changes that people would like to see made for the 20th, we can accommodate, incorporate them into the budget, and get you new copies. On the 20th, which is a week from today, we're a little unsure about the time that we're going to start and the location. So Ms. Guyer, at the end of the meeting, we'll establish both of those things. Is that right? Okay.
What's the second one we're going to say?
Time, location. And just quickly, for the 20th, what Amanda and I are going to do is we're going to create a list of all the changes, all the edits, all the corrections, if you might. And we're going to have an index view to look at on the 20th, so that we can work from some sort of organized list. Not, we didn't, I decided not to give you another round of paper this evening. And so you'll get all of those changes on the 20th. Okay? Everybody good with that? So let me go quickly through nutrition. I've been fairly clear that the school nutrition program has a fairly sizable deficit. The audit for school year 2018 closed with a deficit of $72,000 and change. That deficit comes largely from three areas. One, we did not receive as much in federal funding as we anticipated or budgeted. Two, the participation rates in all three buildings are down. We'll talk about that in a minute. So my projected deficit for the end of this year, 2019, is $193,757. I'd be really happy if I, I'm wrong about that, but that's where we're looking at. Projected increases for this year, we have three sizable increases in our food lines at all three buildings. So one of the things, this is really small, and I can make it bigger. Can you see it, Mr. Kriech?
No.
It's not great. These are the participation rates for the last four years from all three buildings for lunch and breakfast meals. And you'll see, you'll see a trend. Mr. Ladd, I think you've been graphing some of these, and we'll take a look perhaps at your data a little bit in the future, but it's pretty clear from the data that the participation rates have gone down over time. Possibilities for the long-term sustainability of food service. Back in January, when the board started its workshop on budget, I told you that I would begin with, I would start by looking at how we make the food, school nutrition program sustainable. So here are some of the options. We need to dramatically increase the town and metro allocation, that's one option. My number is approximately $223,000, that's what I put into the budget for the 2019 warrant. Number two is to explore a vendor-delivered school nutrition program. There are school nutrition programs in Maine, New Hampshire, as well as in other states, that we are going to take a look at. We're going to do some site visits. We're going to Elliott, Maine, and possibly Rochester, New Hampshire, to look at two separate vendors. We need to increase the use of locally sourced food, see what we can do by large-scale purchasing to try to capture some economy of scale. Use of nutrition services for menu variation. One of the vendors that I talked to said that they have a dietitian on staff, as well as chefs, and they know how to use commodities perhaps in a way that we don't. So we'll learn. And I told you about the site visits. So if I might, any questions on school nutrition? And why don't I close my piece for now? And Mr. Sonton, athletics and co-curricular?
My presentation is obviously a little bit different than doing it in PowerPoint. What I thought made the most sense is if there's an increase or a decrease on the lines within Article Four, I put them down with the number of the line, and I'll go through them quickly for you, just so you can take a look at where things may have gone up and down, and there's a, obviously, an explanation right next to it. Most of these things are affected by the proper use of formulas for stipends, as well as the proper placement within the article or not in the article at all. So jumping right into it, we start with line seven. This is the co-curricular stipend. This was affected because the proper formula was used this year on the stipends amounts. So you'll see that throughout this, some go up, some go down. And that's the explanation of why. Article thirteen, excuse me, line 13, this is travel. This was removed from the article because this was for the middle school, and that was a field trip line, so we've now placed it in the proper article. That's why you don't see that there, or the decrease. Line number 14 is a new line. We've never offered co-curricular supplies at the middle school for our clubs, so we put that in this year, thought that that was appropriate. The correct placement of dues for co-curricular affected line 15. That's why there was, certain things were in there previous that also should have been in the middle school article. The transportation line was affected because when we removed the field trip line, some of those things that were in there were co-curricular and got shifted to the proper line, which is now line 22. 24, there's an increase, as it says here, due to experience, as well as the correct formula was also used here for the stipends with the contract. To 26, this is the proper placement of my cash and lieu, because I don't take the insurance from the school. I'm not sure what's placed before, but that's why it's in Article Four, which obviously bombs there now. 35, we've caught up with some of our replacement of helmets, padding, and so forth for other sports. That's why that's decreased, is because there's not a high need, because we've been diligent doing that over the years. The officials line changed slightly because the capillary league that we belong to is now helping pay for some of the playoff games. It's part of the privilege of going to the playoffs, so they pay for the officials. The supply in the equipment line on 38 and 39, there's minor adjustments there, but that's just normal operating cost. Line 40, there's an increase in league dues. I mean, no surprise there, everything's going up. That covers us for all extracurricular activities. Number 50, co-curricular. We have robotics that we've offered at Monmouth. Our numbers didn't support that, but we also did not have anybody that was, that applied for the position for the stipend. So two things affected that, so we did find an alternative at Monmouth. We also used the correct formula again here with these stipends, and we added the math team stipend. Transportation for 56. Only reason I put this in here is because it's a huge moving target. One act is a large piece of our transportation for co-curricular, and we find out when and where that's going to be five weeks prior to the event. So it's, it's very difficult to, I guess why I'm sharing that with you is the amount. I don't like to decrease or increase by much, because it's usually right on target of what we're going to have. 58 was dues. This was just because of the decrease of the robotics due, which was quite substantial, as you can see. It's over $4,000 to just be involved with that program. Some did decrease in line 62. I just added this because I know there was a question about this. A lot of the decrease in salaries from this year to last year for the stipends were affected because we had coaches retire, and the coaches that we hired and brought in weren't at the same step in experience. So therefore, they're making less money than the previous coach, because it's a different person. Does that make sense? Okay. 60, 62, is that where we were? Increase, no, 64. Again, cash and lieu, that's being taken out of the high school, because it's the other half of the 15 that adds up to the $3,000. Again, properly placed. 73 was an increase of replacement as compared to the middle school. We've been very fortunate with our field hockey program at the high school, that we've had our goalies that had their own equipment. That is no longer the case. So we're going to have to replace and repair some of the things that were there prior to. That's why there's an increased care. The officials line number 74 was underbudgeted this year, because it did not include the trainer. So that has to be back in place. Trainer is something that we had at all varsity JV games that we value, obviously, because it's, it does quite a bit to not only protect our students, but protect our coaches. The uniform decrease in the equipment on line 77, that was just simply because the uniform replacement schedule that we came up with this year. Track uniforms are much less than when you buy soccer uniforms per se, or football, or whatever it may be, because it's simply top and bottom, no different colors, so one set. Transportation, this was, this was underbudgeted quite, by quite a bit this year also, so that's why there's an increase there, is because we're trying to get back to what the minimum operating cost is. So just the highlights real quick down below. These are the major things that were affected. If you look at the co-curricular stipends, coaching stipends, the co-curricular stipends at the high school, and then also the coaching stipends, proper placement of the cash and lieu of, correct amount for the trainer, and correct amount for the high school transportation. That comes out to roughly $25,000. My increase in Article Four this year request is 25,500. So this is a lot of what I'm trying to show you, is that doing it the right way at minimum operating cost is getting us back to where we belong. Jenna, you and I have talked before in the past that we've lost 30% of this article over the last four or five years, so this is kind of basically where we're at, the bottom line. Any questions? Okay. How do I do for time, Mr.?
Hi, thank you. Very well, thank you, Mr. Sonton.
Did I beat you?
Yes.
You sure? I don't think so.
But Mr. Kriech is coming, so. So Richard, why don't we do you next? And then we'll move to guidance and the other articles.
All right. Excuse me. So, technology budget. First thing, going to go over is our current inventory. So right now, we have 1,000 technology-related assets in the district that includes all one-to-one computers, laptops, network hardware servers, desktops, basically anything technology. And those assets have been acquired through purchasing, grants, and donations. Total value of those is estimated to be around $500,000. It's difficult to get an actual estimate due to donations and education pricing. The MLTI laptop program, which is the one-to-one program for grades seven and eight in middle school teachers, is currently in year three of four of their contract, and next year will be year 404. And the Apple laptop lease, which is different from MLTI now, which provides one-to-one laptops for high school and grade school teachers and high school students, is currently in year two of four. And then the other major thing is our photocopy or service lease, which we re-upped at the end of the summer. It is in year one of six. So for next year, some of our new major purchases that we're looking at, things that we absolutely have to have, is a new wireless system at both the high school and the middle school. The current wireless system was installed in the fall of 2013. That was part of the MLTI Round Four. The initial expiration date for that was July 1st, 2017. It was extended out two years, so we have to do it now. One positive thing about redoing this is that we'll have more local control. Whereas in the past, it's just kind of been a black box to us, it was there, and so. And then the other major thing that we have to have is a new server for the middle school. The current one is about seven and a half years old now. Warranty was only seven years, so it's out of warranty. And the new one, again, will have a seven-year warranty, so if anything breaks on it, we're good for seven years. And then the other really big item that we'd like to add more of are the interactive projectors. Currently, we have two in each building. We'd like to get more of those. So I've broken this down by school and then district level and everything. So the first school I'm going to look at is the grade school. Most of the grade school's budget comes in the form of salary and benefits, compensation. We have $50,500 for the laptop leases, and that provides laptops for teachers. The next is program supplies, and those are applications that the kids use, such as Spelling City, Starfall, Project Math. Probably heard of those. The next is hardware equipment. That's bright-length projectors, replacement power adapters that wear out over time, things like that. The next, which is software, software as a service, is mobile device management for the laptops. That should hopefully make my life and Rosie's life a lot easier, rather than having to run around and install the MEA test on 200 laptops. We should just be able to do it all at once. And then for other things, that's ACTM dues and the ACTM conference. And that totals out at about $91,000. And this is just a visual breakdown of the grade school's budget. 51% in the dark blue, compensation. 17% in orange, laptops. 6% in gray, program supplies. 22% yellow, hardware and equipment. 3% in the lighter blue, is software. And above 1% is the other things. So for the middle school, again, most of the budget is compensation and wages, and it's about $38,000. The laptop lease at the middle school is fairly cheap, because they're part of the MLTI program, so the state funds most of it, and that comes out to about $9,000. And then there's a little over $1,200 in program supplies, that's stuff like canned air cleaning supplies, labels, toner, stuff like that. And then hardware and equipment, that would be the new Wi-Fi system, new server, new battery backup. And that totals about $65,000 or under. And here's a visualized breakdown for the middle school. We have 59% in the dark blue, which is employee compensation, 14% in orange, which is the laptop lease, 2% in gray, which is program supplies, and 25% in yellow, which is hardware and equipment. So the high school, for compensation, we have about $52,000. That's going to add a full-time position at the high school for probably to manage and integrate the laptops with the students. Currently, we only have quarter-time help there, and she also teaches art, so should be good help there. The biggest thing at the high school is the laptop lease, which is about $78,000. And again, the reason why that costs so much is because that's all on the local district. We don't have any state funding there, like at the middle school. And that covers students and staff for grades nine through 12. Program supplies, that's basically the same as the middle school. And hardware and equipment, that's new Wi-Fi, again, and power adapters. The Wi-Fi is a little more expensive at the high school, because it's a bigger building, so. And for the high school, the total is about $150,000, and there's a visualized breakdown of that. So the high school, the major item is the laptop lease, which is in orange, and is about 52% of the overall budget. Compensation in blue is about 35%. Program supplies in gray is 1%. And hardware slash equipment in yellow, about 12%. And for the district, this is stuff that the business office uses, and stuff that is shared between all three of the schools, that it doesn't really make sense to build to one specific school. I leave my salaries under here. So the first is compensation, which is $57,000. The next is software, software as a service and support, that includes things like Power School, frontline absence management, the website stipend, things like that. Is about $43,000. Next is program supplies. Again, that's the same as high school, middle school, hardware and equipment, new computer for the secretary, and other miscellaneous repair items. And then other, which is ACTM dues and the ACTM conference, similar to the grade school. Total at the district is about $104,329.06. Here's a visualized breakdown. So compensation in blue is about 55% of the overall budget. Software and software as a service in orange is 42%. Hardware and equipment in yellow is 2%. Program supplies in gray is 1%, and other is less than 1%. So in summary, for the entire district, compensation and wages, we spend roughly $194,562.67. Laptop leases, that's for, this is high school and middle school combined, and grade school teachers, is about $103,000. Program supplies, $8,400. Hardware and equipment, close to $57,000. Software, software as a service and support, about $46,000. And for other items, just under $1,000, for a total of about $410,270.77. And again, here's a visualized breakdown of that, with compensation being in blue, taking up about 48%. Laptop leases in orange, taking about 25%. Program supplies in gray, with about 2%. Hardware and equipment in yellow being 14%. Software and software as a service in light blue at about 11%. And then other in green as less than 1%. So, and that's everything.
Any questions?
We all set? It's going to be like 100-yard dash, or 100 meters, sorry. So the information I've provided for you, the top is the breakdown directly from Article Five for the high school student-staff support for guidance. If you'll notice, line 34 to 50, that's tied directly to salary and benefits, which is an negotiated part of the contract, which is not any part of the work that we have done with that, in the budget development. However, from 51 to 65, I've highlighted that as lines that are included in the, in the table below. And basically, these are the costs projected for next year for us to do business in those areas. So we took the existing budget and looked at what we expended this year, and those are the costs you have down for the upcoming year that we're requesting. It's only an increase in $355.14. Any questions on the guidance budget at the high school?
Hang on a minute.
Thank you.
Guidance for middle school, as you know, Winthrop Middle School only had a part-time guidance counselor for many years. As of this year, it's full-time for the first time. No, last year, I think. I think it was last year. And what I wanted to do is just share with you, when you look through the middle school guidance, you will see very little, $200 supplies. But I wanted to share with you some of the things that the middle school guidance counselor has done at no cost to the district over the past two years. We've had the Cromwell Center for Disabilities come to the middle school, so that now we have a program very much like Mr. Ladd's. We have Boys to Men program being offered at the middle school for eighth-grade boys free of charge. We're sending two eighth-grade students to Girls' Day at the State House for an all-day event. We have a holiday store where we take donations and set up a store where all students in the middle school are free to go buy, actually take, gifts for parents and other members of their family, wrap them, take them home, whereas they may not have the opportunity to do that anywhere except the middle school. And these are all spearheaded by Lauren McHatten. We're having College and Career Week this week, actually, and every morning, we have announcements. We have different dress-up days, and we are targeting different universities and making fun of how long ago some of us went to school. And tomorrow is Dress as Your Future Self, and so there are many people my age who are coming as retirees, just to let you know. So if you happen to come to the middle school tomorrow, and we look a little dressed down, that's why, we're going to be retirees. We also have Sleep Awareness Week, Red Ribbon Week. I struggle with that one. We do a partnership with the Winthrop Food Pantry and Tabitha's Closet here in town to provide additional food, clothing, and personal care products to the backpack program. Ms. McHatten actually takes kids to Tabitha's Closet as needed. We send, let's see, we are introducing community circles programming to our sixth and seventh grade students in the classroom. Community circles are the basis of restorative, the restorative justice model. Lauren is trained in Life is Good Playmakers, which she learned from Karen Toothaker here in town. And both Ms. McHatten and Coach Knowton, Ms. Knowton, the PE teachers, have been trained free of cost, and they deliver this trauma-informed play to all seventh graders throughout the year. Prime for Life drug and alcohol training, Ms. McHatten went through a pretty intensive training, and she will be offering that throughout the third trimester for eighth-grade students. She's also arranged for our eighth graders to Capitol Area Tech and have a tour. And then she wanted me to tell you that at the end of second year, she calls it mid-year, but at the end of the second trimester, 13% of sixth graders at Winthrop Middle School are new this year. When asked on a scale of one to five, five being excellent, 77% of the sixth graders rated their year as a four or above. 100% of the sixth-grade students report that they know where her office is. That's an important thing. 94% of sixth graders say there is a staff member at Winthrop Middle School they feel safe talking to if they need help and support. I want to repeat that. 94% of the sixth graders at Winthrop Middle School say there is a staff member on-site that they would feel safe talking to if they needed help or support. 75% of sixth-grade students report that they would feel safe talking to Ms. McHatten. And 63% of sixth graders know who they could go to if they need food, personal care items, or clothing. So I think although my, my budget for guidance is minimal, we are getting one heck of a bang for our buck. And she's always looking for future ways of becoming better. And we are hoping, Dr. Brown and I spoke today, to have both Ms. McHatten and Ms. Knowton come to our April meeting and present a proposal for a new wellness class that will happen next year. Instead of seventh-grade guidance, we are revamping the entire program to be a wellness class, to incorporate all the aspects of wellness, so we can look forward to that. Thank you.
Everybody's going with paper tonight? Give.
Grade school, Article Five, Student and Staff Support, Winthrop Guidance Department. So our budget for guidance is pretty small, as is Karen's, but I will highlight it quickly. Approximately $68,000 goes into salary and benefits for the school counselor. This year, we put all of our assessments in the guidance line in all three of the buildings. We used to have a district assessment line. This year, it's separated out. And that's about $8,500 at the grade school. That includes NUI, CPAA, DRA II, and the COGAD. So those are our basic testing instruments located now in the guidance assessment line. Professional Development and Travel for the guidance counselor, $450. Total budget, seventy-eight thousand, five hundred dollars. I had to put in what EPS tells us about guidance. According to the EPS ratio, we should have three, three hundred and fifteen to one should be the ratio, and our ratio is four hundred and forty to one. That doesn't mean that we necessarily need a guidance counselor, but what that does mean is that she's incredibly busy. She's on the go, probably pretty close to as much as I am, it seems like, we're coming and going all the time. She has been a great addition to the grade school. She came as an experienced teacher and guidance counselor, so she has that great combination of skills, and it's been a tremendous benefit. I had her give me a brief synopsis or overview of what she does. If I had done the list, it would look a little bit different, but this is from her perspective. Basically, she meets with all of the kids every other week from kindergarten through fifth grade and delivers classroom guidance lessons for about thirty minutes. She does individual short-term counseling sessions on a weekly basis with about twenty students. When they need more in-depth counseling, she works with parents and helps them obtain outside referrals. She does daily lunch groups where she works on social skills and lunch, and it seems like every single day, there's a group out in front of the office waiting for Mrs. Grant. We're gonna be eating in her office today. So that's a real thrill for the kids. They definitely line up for that. She's on-call to help with any situation that might be going on in the school that may relate to behavior or mental health. She does a lot of communicating with parents and assisting parents in helping them understand the connection between things that may be going on at home and difficulties that we may be seeing at school, and helping to provide resources as well as consultation. She helps with the attendance piece, which is always a challenge, it seems like, managing attendance and trying to make sure that kids are coming to school. She works collaboratively with teachers, parents, and administration. I guess that's me. And she does a lot of relationship building with our at-risk kids. And I have to mention bucket filling again, because that's what we do, and she's a key member of our bucket filling team and works to ensure that we are working together to fill each other's buckets. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Ladd.
How did I do one time tonight?
I graciously gave you a little bit more. Actually, Mr. Preach gave you most of his time.
She's been giving me a hard time, because I was so long-winded before.
You found there was a technology challenge.
I know, that's why I went pay.
Ready to move on?
Yes.
Okay. So the next article is Article Six, which is the Board of Education, my office. I've made some pretty substantial reductions to this article. The first is legal fees. I've dropped that by forty-five thousand. Currently, the budget is just about fifty-five. We are roughly seventy percent of the way through the year right now, and we've used, what are we, seven, Amanda-ish? So we've used about seven of the fifty-five. So we're in pretty good stead there. Next year, because we belong to a regional service collaborative, we have to pay a fee. This is given to us in our general purpose aid. There's a line for that. So basically, the way it works is we pay the collaborative to belong, so that's the fee. I've cut positions in the business office, one point one. Back in July, I reduced the accounts clerk and didn't fill it, and then in October, reduced half of the accounts payable position. So that's where that one point one comes from. Be happy to answer any questions about that. That article is down pretty appreciably. Yep? No? Are you gonna move on? Okay. Next is school administration, and I'll do just a quick overview, and then I've asked the principals to let you know what's in their budgets. My budget, as proposed, has a full-time principal in each building. It has a full-time assistant principal at Winthrop Grade School, and a forty percent dean of students at Winthrop High School. David, did I get that math right? I think it's forty percent for the dean. Joel, yes, is that right? Okay, thank you.
So I've been asked to speak to the recommendation that we put forward to have a full-time dean of students at the high school. Dr. Brown alluded to this when she discussed the need for us to have people in positions that can support the needs that we have at the high school. So what we've done is, you'll see that you have two handouts provided for you. One, which is plain white paper, took from the existing job description for the athletic director slash dean of students, where it was the model that she just described, where we basically share the dean of students, Karen and I do, at the middle school and the high school. And the model that you see in front with Winthrop High School at the top is, based on our needs at the high school, we've created a job description and a list of duties and responsibilities. So I'm not gonna go through all of those, because it's very comprehensive, but this is really based on our evaluation of the needs to support our students, our staff, our families in the community, to help keep our school safe, to make sure we have the resources available on a daily basis to respond, whether it's academics, behavior, safety, emergency preparedness, no matter what the piece. And the job description at the top, I think, is, this really describes a comprehensive approach to this. The dean of students works as a high school principal in carrying out the school's academic and behavior programs. He or she is responsible for attendance, discipline, emergency preparedness, safety, and related student personnel services, and performs the duties within the authority and responsibility delegated by the high school principal. The dean of students work closely with the principals, school personnel, and students to build and maintain a positive, safe school climate. So when you have an opportunity to take a look at those duties and responsibilities, at some point, if you need clarification, I can provide that for you. It's a very comprehensive list. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
For school administration at the middle school, piggybacking on what Mr. Preach just said, if we decrease the dean of students at the middle school, we need to do something, and that is what Dr. Brown has recommended, to make the middle school principal full-time. And that would take me back out of the classroom for the entire day. I'd be able to be available in the office area, or at least not looking for coverage as I leave my kids, which is shortchanging either the office or the kids in the classroom. So as much as I need, Joel, we know that, you know, limited resources. And so when we cut the dean's position, then the principal would be full-time and pick up all of the responsibilities that Joel has done there. Just a myriad. So again, when you look at all the PowerPoint presentations, technology, or anybody else, the major cost in administration is salaries, and that's between my salary and Mrs. Warner, who is the administrative assistant. We talked, I talked about that at the last presentation, how she is jack-of-all-trades. She does it all in the office. She's receptionist, she's my secretary, she's the nurse when she has to be, and just everything. She covers lunch duties when she has to. So definitely does her job and does it well. The other thing is dues and fees under administration. That's for our dues to pay to the main principals association, our professional responsibilities. And I did put in some, I think, two hundred dollars this year for books. I'm hoping to be able to buy enough books to do a book study with the staff. And like a thousand dollars in supplies, and that's it. So I think that we will see the staff feeling good about having a full-time principal and getting me back out of the classroom, although I have to say, I will truly miss actually getting to know more of the kids on a different basis. Thank you.
Jeff.
All right. Sorry, I covered some of it in my last presentation, but the primary changes in the grade school and the proposed budget revolve around, first off, taking a look at making the assistant principal's job a full-time position. Again, I've run the building as an individual with no help for a number of years. The last two years, I've had the privilege of having somebody for half-time, and then this last year, point six. And so the proposal is to increase that from point six to a full-time assistant principal, which is badly needed with the number of students that we have in the building. Dr. Brown's talked about safety and security, and really looking at the resources that are necessary in terms of human resources, to make sure that there's somebody that's available and able to respond to classrooms and to other situations. In all honesty, in this building, this complex, I end up spending far too much time as maintenance man, janitor, ice chopper, ice zander. I mean, every night when I go home, I go out and chop ice before I leave. I mean, it's just, it's constant in terms of what it takes in this building, and I'm getting to the point where I need some help. And so that...
Well, I'm old enough to admit that job.
No, I do. I have gotten to that point. I'm old enough now, I can admit I need help. That's the first step I take. So anyway, so that is the primary change, is an increase to a full-time assistant principal. And the other change that is in the budget is to increase Kristen, who is at the front desk, and she primarily is the receptionist and student information secretary. And she currently works six hours a day, and it would increase her to eight hours a day. And it will allow us to extend coverage in the office from morning till when the buses get off the road at the end of the day. Right now, I have to take a radio with me if I go to a meeting and I get a phone call. I mean, you know, a radio call, the students coming back or whatever. So that will be a great help, to have somebody to be able to cover the office. And the amount of time that goes into accounting for students between attendance and phone calls home, and radios, and buzzing people in. And as we look at security and potentially increased security, those jobs are gonna become even more challenging as we move forward. Other than those two minor changes, which are costly, the rest of my budget is pretty much as it has been in previous years. And I'll leave it at that unless there's more that I should go with.
You're awesome. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, ready to continue? Questions for Jeff? School administration? Okay. So transportation, and I would like to ask Lori to speak to the special ed increase, which is primarily the big driver in this line.
Thank you. So the overall budget increase for Article Eight, transportation, is forty-seven thousand and a little bit. And seventeen of that has to do with, I believe, for East Services, the contract with Northeast and five thousand is an increase in fuel. However, but the largest increase is the special ed portion of that, at an increase of just over thirty thousand dollars. So last year, we had a van that we purchased through local entitlement, and we had a van driver, and we were paying salary and benefits for that, and it was an amount around fifty-four thousand. And I actually think with added time, it was beyond that. It was getting up towards sixty thousand. We knew that we were going to have another student out of district that we needed transportation for, and the thoughts of having close to a hundred and ten to a hundred and twenty thousand dollars seemed very high for two vans on the road. So one of the options that was explored was to have Northeast provide that transportation. They gave us a quote, and at the time, the quote was in the sixties, which to us was, wow, that's pretty good, for two vans on the road. And that was with us leasing our van to Northeast, and they would pick up all the maintenance charges for that. So in the end, we went with that. At the time it was all happening, was about the time that the budget was being approved. So we continued to keep those lines in the budget for the van driver, though we knew we were going to end that because the costs were a lot less to go with the contract. However, after the budget was approved by the town, we then got a correction email from the vendor saying, I'm sorry, we made a mistake with the quote, and it was about twenty thousand dollars anymore. So that's why our budget is going to be over this year, because we certainly didn't anticipate that when we wrote, you know, the cost. We were aware that the costs were probably gonna be up about ten thousand dollars more, because it was about the same time we were placing the student out of district, but we didn't anticipate another twenty thousand. So that is kind of, and I gave you the breakdown here, where the vans are going, how much it is. Also, their cost went from, I believe, a hundred and eighty-three dollars a day to a hundred and eighty-seven dollars a day for the van. The other thing is, our agreement was, we would provide the gasoline for those vans out of our budget, so I had to increase the gasoline van budget there also. So I think that's it.
Questions from the school committee?
Transportation is very expensive.
Okay, Lori, thank you very much. Thank you, thank you. All right. Under, so that's transportation under facilities and maintenance. Just a couple of things to point out. Back in the fall, we had a contract with an electrical vendor that was ending, and we needed to negotiate a new contract, so we did. We are now with main power options, and we talked about that last November. Unfortunately, regardless of who we're with, we cannot avoid the electrical increase that I think we're all experiencing as homeowners. So the budget has a twenty-one thousand dollar increase for electricity. It also has a point two director of facilities and grounds. That's a correction from the first presentation. To redo my math, it's not point four, it's a point two. And then extra money for the high school contracted services. And as an aside note, and you heard this in Joel's presentation and perhaps throughout, the nineteen-twenty budget has had to make some corrections. Budgets are projections. They are, you're working in three budgets, and Ben and I had this conversation today. Last year, the one you're in and the one you're building. And so you're guessing at things that, what might cost in a year from now, or even eighteen months from now. And so some of those things, we have incorporated into our facilities and maintenance budgets. For example, we just got the three quotes for the sprinkler systems in all three buildings. Those sprinklers are Jeff, what, yours, eighteen, twenty-five hundred? Trying to think of what theirs.
Twenty-six, I think.
So they're roughly twenty-five hundred dollars each, and that wasn't budgeted in the year that we're in.
Were they checked?
No, this is for repairs to the sprinkler systems, that, as well as...
So you spent a lot to mine last year.
Yes. Part of the process is a quarterly inspection. And with the new company, they identify the deficiencies when they do the inspection, and so we've contracted to get those deficiencies fixed immediately rather than...
Same company that...
Yes.
No, you're fine. Thank you for asking the question. So we've also added some money for high school contracted services in the facilities department. As the architect who was here in January shared with you, your buildings are forty years old, in some cases, or older, and things are starting to fail. So we've increased maintenance lines. Any questions about maintenance, transportation? Debt service, there's a schedule in the board packet of all of the debt that we pay, high school bond, building that we're in, the efficiency bond abandoned that we still have one more year on? I'd have to look. But anyways, so debt service is coming down. This is primarily because the high school bond is starting to wane, starting to close. Any questions about debt service? No? And so that brings us to revenues, and we're a little bit ahead of schedule, which is nice, to give them more time to discuss this. So our revenues come primarily in one, two, three, four, five, six, six big categories. I'll start at the bottom. The largest category is the local appropriation. If passed as-is, the budget tonight would be seven million, forty-seven thousand, three-hundred-and-fifty-three dollars for local appropriation from the town of Winthrop. And we're back up... Now we're back up to the top, subsidy and debt service. And I shared this with the grade school faculty today. What we get from the DOE at this point is a projected subsidy payment. It's not enacted, it won't get enacted until June. The legislature ends and they have an actual figure, then we'll get an enacted amount. So this is their projected amount. Four million, nine hundred and sixty-two thousand, eight hundred and twelve dollars. We get tuition from students who come from Fayette at the middle and high school. Main care, Lori, want to give a quick sentence about what main care is?
So we bill for a lot of the one-on-ones. They are trained BHPs, certified BHPs, so we're able to bill for their time and also OTPT speech services for our students.
Thank you. Game receipts, money that we take in at football games, basketball games, and so on. That's a five thousand dollars. And then miscellaneous revenue, we have several students here that are either tuitioned in or have services from other districts. So they might need a net tech or they might need a health agent. So we build the other district for that service. And that's where the miscellaneous comes from. And I believe that's my last slide. Yes?
Can I ask Ms. Lemio, for the main care with the one forty-five, is that what the seed money already taken?
Yes.
Thank you.
So there, there we have it. I think that's it. So now it's your turn to ask questions and debate pieces of this and give us some chance to where you'd like to go. And before I do that, I, I'm sorry to interrupt you. I want to thank all of the administrators who came tonight, represented. This is a different process than they had before. They put a lot of time in, and I surprised a couple of them. Kind of sorry about that, but you are articulate and eloquent as always, so thank you. They really know their budgets, they're the experts. And if you have questions tonight, I'm sure I will need help in answering them. So I want to thank you both again. Really nicely done. And I would be remiss if I didn't thank one other person here, and that's Ms. Amanda. Amanda Stenar-
Wait.
Amanda, hired in October, rock star when it comes to putting budgets together, asking questions. I kid her because we have my Sunday morning last night, how many, twenty, thirty questions? We go over the budget, she answers every single one of them. So, and she's spot-on accurate, so thank you very much. Anyways, and that being said, it's your turn.
So the process has been different for all of us. It's a lot of information, so the questions are liable to come slowly from the school committee here. But thank you to just repeat what Dr. Brown said. The different process has been very nice to hear from the individuals who know the most about the budget, so thank you. Appreciate it. And school committee people, your questions for the illustrious folks?
I don't really have necessarily a question yet. It's more of just a philosophy. I am, I have a couple of concerns with some of the changes that have been proposed for this budget, and one especially is our legal line. There's a lot of pending legislation out there that is going to affect negotiations. And I'm going to be honest with you that if most of them, if any of them pass, I will not be comfortable negotiating without a lawyer present. So I think that we're going to have to consider adding substantial money to that. And to face the reality that we're going to have to pay a lawyer a lot of money in order to negotiate for us, because it's, I have no expertise in school law. And I wouldn't want to make an error that would result in hurting or harming the school committee, because a lot of what is being put forth in legislation is, would allow a lot of things to go to arbitration, and that is extremely expensive. So if that does happen, then we would need to have lawyer fees for arbitration as well. And I don't think ten thousand dollars, what is currently proposed, is close to enough. So last meeting, we mentioned that Ginny and I and Dr. Brown went and talked to Shenavellows. Fortunately, it was tabled in the Labor Committee and moved to the Education Committee, but since then, we have, you know, two, two more bills that are being put forth. And it seems like that the LD two forty, the one that Ginny and I talked about, that that's going to pass. It just seems like that what everybody is saying is that's going to pass. So I propose that we increase our legal line significantly. So that's my first thought. I can't remember my one question. Is it last time I mentioned about our sub rate of pay?
Yes.
Did I ask about that or no?
No, but I'd like to know.
Yeah, because I thought at one point we had a discussion about that we're having trouble finding subs and that it might be necessary to increase the cost, I mean, the payment to our subs. And I'm not sure if that line shows that increase.
The sub budget for next year is eighty-five dollars a day, and that reflects the twelve-dollar minimum wage going into effect in January of twenty-twenty.
I would just like to talk about increasing the legal line as well. I agree with Ms. Shumway's argument, and I would add to that, that the previous budget amount was totally reactionary, but as, I have no reason to think that situations will be a great deal less. So I would still like to increase that legal line by at least ten thousand dollars. I'll throw that number out and see what the rest of you think. Because it went from forty-five down to ten, and that scares me.
So you're looking at twenty possibly then?
Well, there is. I would hit at forty, but because it was reactionary, I think we had a need for that. And so we put it up because we were behind that much the year before. So, like I said, it really scares me to not have that budget at a higher rate.
I know we're not talking about calendar, but-
We are now.
In reading through some of the things, something that I didn't really pick up on before was the voluntary new staff day. New, yeah, new staff voluntary workshop day on the twenty-third. Is that voluntary and paid, or is that in the budget?
No.
So what is, what, like I said, I don't know if this is the appropriate time to ask, but I think if we're asking especially new staff to come to a workshop, they need to be paid, because if you were a new member of anything, you're going to go to that without getting paid. And I know we went back and forth, and we've cut that one of the workshop days, so it's good to see that for full staff, it's back in there. But I think if we're asking especially new staff to come, which is essential for them to be there, that they do need to be paid something. I don't know their hourly rate or whatever it is to come to that day, because if they don't come, what, I mean, what does that look like too? You know? Where are they going to get what they needed to get to come to that workshop day, I guess? They'll show up probably and not get paid if we leave it in there, but I think they should be paid. And then I know, and again, I know this isn't calendar, but I know one of the concerns was about afternoon preschool. And I think in what that would look like for the program, and I think I had asked Dr. Brown about that, it was around a three thousand dollar possibly to do a bus run for just preschool. So I just want to look at that possibly being put in. If we're going to make a decision about the budget before we make a decision about the calendar, some of that needs to be looked at, maybe together. I don't know of any other increases that may happen with that, but I know that was another cost. If that's something that we want to keep, the afternoon preschool, then we may need to look at that second bus run for just preschool, so.
Thank you.
I don't? Okay. Help me out here. I'm not sure I heard about the data person and the curriculum coordinator tonight. I thought that that, was that going to be in the assistant grade school preschool?
No, the job description for the director of teaching and learning does have a data analyst component-
That's a whole other person.
Yes.
Okay.
It is not connected to the assistant principal at the grade school.
Okay. What's the official name? That's what's throwing me, I think.
The director of teaching and learning?
Yeah. Thank you. Mr. Trask?
Not trying to give away any secrets or anything, but when you go back to legal expenses, it is somewhat well-known, at least among ourselves anyway, that we're doing this, I guess I'd call it pro bono or something. And one of the attempts is, whereas in the past, members of the board have received an additional fee for negotiations, is this year is to cut that cost and to take in and save money by doing it. I personally don't think you can do that forever. It will help if we are able to negotiate three-year contracts for the bargaining units we have. I'm not sure what we have on the schedule for next year, but it is, it's very time-consuming. And I'm the dragon, so to speak, in the group, because the other group works much harder than I do. I've got to listen around, but I do know it's time-consuming, because I've done it in the past, and I've watched others in the past, too. I don't think that's good for us. One of the things I would like to see, quite frankly, is to expand this board or this committee to seven, so that we can spread out some of the other responsibilities a little bit more evenly and not have to double up or triple up or whatever it may be. I think it's manageable to have a school committee of seven people. I also don't think that in terms of any type of compensation, that I've now kind of decided that we could be behind the town council if they have as many meetings as we've been having, because they're paid on a per meeting basis versus paid on a stipend of three hundred dollars, which is what our pay is, which, you don't get into this business with a pay if you do a small business to get into. But it's just the idea of, I think this is following what's happening all through things, such as there's more legislation, there's more responsibilities coming down from the legislature and the Department of Education and whether it's OSHA or whoever it is. You have to become a multi-prepared person, and you don't realize it's not just all educational policy. There's a lot of other things you've got to help to share the responsibility of, and that's why you want to have the good relationship that we seem to be developing here in this sub-community between us and the administrators and the staff in general. But, so I don't think there's enough money in that legal services. I am concerned, it's just a few calls and all of a sudden, we spend two, three thousand dollars. They get paid three fifty to four fifty, you know, an hour. And some of our questions are quite thought-provoking. So we do our best to try to help our community, but I don't think they should always rely on the fact that we are still somewhat new to some of this process and with changeover, and that's going to happen. Some of us are not going to be here next year, and by choice rather than anything else. And so you've got to fill in for that experience that some of us have gained over the last few years, so. That's a concern, I guess.
Thank you. I just wanted to add that Dr. Brown had estimated, I would say even a month ago, that the savings, that the work that she's done, that Jo and I have done, just on the administrator's negotiations of sixteen thousand dollars, if we had built it out to, if we had one of our lawyers at the table. And this year, we're also negotiating the support staff. So I just don't think your ten thousand is going to be enough. Now, it's not a negotiation year next year. I think we still have one more year on the teachers' contracts, so there wouldn't be a need for that, but if the legislation passes and certain items are allowed to go to arbitration, then we would see increased employee fees just based on that.
What we can do is, we can't do any official business right here tonight as a workshop tonight, but what we can do is take sort of a straw poll vote, which would give some direction to the corrected sheets that Dr. Brown will give us the next meeting. But we would need to sort of conduct, come up with a number, see how people feel about that, and sort of get a straw poll consensus, if you will, about that. So I'll start one end of the other about what kind of, what kind of number you'd like to throw. I guess Ms. Shumway is, take your way.
Dr. Brown, if you can confirm that it's not a negotiation year? That's a yes and a no question. If you have two units that are negotiating, assuming, hoping, both reach settlement, then we would have three settled agreements for the nineteen-twenty year. If either of those units don't, then you would be negotiating during the twenty. Okay, thank you. So my recommendation is thirty thousand. So an additional twenty-
An additional two.
Additional twenty. What's already proposed.
For a total of thirty.
Correct.
So we're talking about an additional twenty. Mrs. Cook?
I think that sounds reasonable. I know, I don't know the other laws much besides LD two forty, that one is scary enough as it is.
Right.
And it looks like it's going to pass.
I think thirty is a good place to go.
Total of thirty.
Total of thirty.
Additional twenty. Sure, thirty. Additional twenty. Okay. And I concur. Does that give you enough direction to do what you need to do?
Okay, thank you.
Any other ideas that we can?
We haven't finalized any of this, but I do think we should put a sum of money to figure out how to either continue the services that are being provided by Ms. Shore or to take in. I'd like to see us go straight to a streaming service, which I know that, talked a little bit, nobody wants to disclose the amount of money, but let's say if we put five thousand dollars in, we'd probably have more than enough for the streaming service, but not more, not a lot more than that, because I can't really disclose which community has told me, because it was unofficial, but we do have somebody just across the river over there that's going to start, you know, broadcasting this through a streaming service. So I just, I just think it's a miscellaneous item, but I think we've had a pretty good response to looking at YouTube or going through the school website to see what has been done here. Everybody I've talked to has said, let's make it even better, let's do the streaming type of thing, too, so. I'm biased.
I hope we are paying Ms. Shore. Are we paying Ms. Shore this evening?
Yes.
We are. Do you have any specifics? Because if not, I would like to go, well, do you, you want to make a particular recommendation?
Yeah, I'd recommend that we put five thousand dollars towards the broadcasting of our meetings in the budget. And we get this finalized between now and too much further. The official vote on our budget is going to be what? Is it going to be inexisted?
Oh, which official? We have to, we have to cast it before it goes to the town council.
Right. Is April first today it goes to the town council? I can't remember.
Just to review the timeline, next Wednesday, depending on what happens today, is the next scheduled board debate. And if you finish, then you vote on the articles on the twentieth. If you don't, we need to come up with another day, because I understand that people have conflicts on the twenty-seventh. So that's the process. And then we present to the town council on the eighth.
The eighth of April?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you.
So I'll have something to say.
Okay. Do you want to give any kind of opinion about the streaming?
I think it's a great idea. I don't know what the cost would be to have it. I mean, 5,000 might be a great start. I mean, I don't, I can't imagine it would be more than that, but I don't know what goes into, besides time and, you know what I mean? If there's any other cost to that.
Have you heard from folks? I mean, we received one email to the school committee about it.
Just been reading through some of the calendar stuff about getting some of that information via online. There's a couple of things, but I haven't heard anything overly yea or nay on it. I don't know what, what, what would be bad except for the cost, you know, that's a lot of money. But I think it's going to add more and bring more people in ultimately, especially if it's either livestreamed or, well, yeah, livestreamed so that people can watch it as it's happening. We may not be able to interact at that point in time, but at least people can see it as it's happening and the news gets out there sort of immediately.
May I add something? The YouTube video's gotten 143 views so far of your last.
Okay, that's good. Thank you.
That's great.
That's good. You just came prepared tonight with a.
I just looked it up.
Of course you did. Thank you. Mrs. Cook, do you have anything about the streaming?
I think it's a good idea. I have no idea what it would cost. We can support Jo's idea of $5,000 if he thinks that's reasonable, though.
Okay, thanks. I don't know anything about, like to know more about the, you know, how it works and, but whatever will help communicate with our community, I think it's a good idea. I'll have to change my wardrobe, but other than that, it sounds good. Anything else?
I have something.
Go ahead.
Last week, or, yeah, last week, when Mrs. Chris was presenting the middle school, it was mentioned that the RTI position, the ed tech that was, that left, that she's not going to be replaced. And I have concerns about there being a lack of, lack of RTI at the middle school. I know that that already was feeling like it wasn't what we were doing up to this point, that that wasn't adequate or feeling adequate. So to not be replacing that position, we already are, you know, limited staff at the middle school because, just because of the number of students that actually are housed in that building. So I would like to see if an effort can be made to create some sort of RTI program. With that being said, again, not discussing calendar, but I, and I'm leaving it up to the experts on this, is that if we had an ed tech working on an RTI program prior, if the early release on Wednesday for teacher professional development slash collaboration happens, we still have ed techs that are employed and being paid. Could they run an RTI program on that half-day? Would that be adequate? Would that not be just something, you know, that I was thinking of in order for us to not have to increase our budget necessarily, because they're already staff? But like I said, I'd leave that up to the experts to figure out what that program is. I wouldn't want to add a half-time person and then not have it adequately, you know, be, be an adequate program. So, so that is one of my concerns.
Can I follow up maybe with that concern? Is it okay if I ask Mrs. Cook?
Absolutely.
So, Ms. Chris?
Yes.
I asked you about the RTI when you presented earlier. And so given these couple thoughts that as far as I know, it's law that we have an R, a functioning RTI program, K-12. And I know that you made a heck of a pitch, if you will, to get that position for RTI in math. So we're left thinking that there are no RTI math folks left in the middle school, which would be a really good thing if that were, if that were so. Or perhaps you've come up with a different way to satisfy that RTI law. Would you, I'm sorry to ask you this without preparing, but are you, are you willing to speak to that?
Yes. I think one of the things, as we look forward to early releases and developing consistent professional development, that would be one of the things that the teachers would be allowed to do. Look at students, look at data, and develop plans for those students and how to get them from where they are to the next step. As you know, at some, at one point, we had two full-time ed techs. Chris McEwen was the ELA remedial teacher and Ashley Fecto was the math. And so they pulled students and worked with them one-on-one or in small group. I would hope that we would be able to do somewhat the same with the existing teachers in ELA and math to develop individualized programs for certain students.
So you're thinking IEP kind of thing?
Yes. Or 504. Or, but, but not that. Not through special ed, but some kind of a plan. And it may include coming in early, it may include staying late. We have students who stay after school four days a week just to get caught up on work. It's a, it's better for some students to stay and work one-on-one with a teacher, even if they have to go to the detention room. They don't have a detention, but they go and they sit with a teacher who can help them with their work. Whereas if they go home, they don't get any help.
So, but I am right in saying that by law we have to have an RTI?
Correct.
So that would be a new, quite a plan for. How do I do there? Go.
In a perfect world, give you two back.
My follow-up to that is that what if the half-day doesn't come to fruition for whatever reason? That, where does that leave you?
It leaves us developing plans for students during prep periods or when we can.
I just want to make sure that you're, that you're going to be adequately covered. So whether or not that means extra time for teachers, you know, I don't want to leave you with a hole in your budget.
I think, again, in a perfect world, it would be wonderful if I had three math teachers, three ELA teachers, three social studies teachers, three science teachers, so that we could actually have grade-level staff. That hasn't happened for a very long time. I think if you really wanted to look at a model of what we could have and be truly effective, it wouldn't be adding an ed tech. It would be looking at teaching staff to better service students. When we added the math remedial teacher, we already had three math teachers, and now we're down to two.
And that's what my concern is.
I think we're at a little bit of a crossroads. We really need to know that we can pass that calendar. We need to know that it gets passed. If it gets passed the way it is now, then there's a little bit of RTI possibility there.
Nice question, though. You keep talking about this calendar with a half-day early releases. I thought we were talking about now to now and a half early releases, which is not a half-day to me.
I don't know that it's been specified.
If I may respond to that, Mr. Petrowski, I don't think, from where I said we were clear in what times were going to be published for the early release dates. That was an unanswered question.
Before we vote, we are session on whether it's for.
And I think I should have said that at the last meeting, right? That we need more. Yeah, go up to it. Yeah, I think so. One thing I noticed, and I know that we're going to be getting a list of differences from our, our budget, but I just wanted to make you note that Article 7, that there's an administrative assistant retirement payout, but I believe that that person is no longer retiring in middle school. I just want to make sure that that, that payout is removed so that we have more money toward. And then another thing that I did notice was some maintenance projects in our, in that article. And so I just didn't know, I know that we have a lot of, we have, or hoping to get money to do the study, the building study, but I know that we have things, we have needs right now for buildings. So I just wanted a kind of a clarification of what we're putting money towards next year for maintenance. Would you like the principals to respond to that question?
I'm prepared.
I think so. Karen, do you want to go first or Jo?
We're searching. Oh, I found yours, Jo. This one? You want that?
I can, I'll bring it. I'll look at it a lot. A couple of things that I know of, we have some major projects that until we get the study, we have not put money into cover, because we really need some expert advice in terms of what we should invest in, in terms of repairs right now, or things that might be better to wait a couple of years and take a different tact on. Terms of the, sort of the short-term things at the grade school, we've got interior painting that we're going to be doing, which is an annual thing. We try to paint different sections. We have upgraded electrical, which we need to continue to work on. When we moved into the old high school building, there were two outlets in each classroom. So each year, we've been upgrading those classrooms to try and eliminate all of the extension cords and power strips and things that it takes nowadays in a classroom. We have the, out in the courtyard, out in front of the grade school, that walkway has gotten to the point where it's become a safety issue. We just uncovered it today with the tractor. Thank goodness we had it and got some of the snow and ice out of there before we get the rain. But that walkway needs to either be taken up or regraded because the strips, edging strips along the edge have become a safety hazard. So that's not a huge amount of money, but it's something that we need to take care of. Trying to remember what else was on that list.
So in addition, let's see, we talked about, we talked about the courtyard, ceiling tiles?
Ceiling tiles throughout the building from where it's leaked. That is an ongoing project in terms of getting those upgraded. It's not, again, terribly expensive, and it may leak again and get stained, but we have a lot of them that need to be upgraded. We also have some carpet in the hallway that was damaged from acid, from the battery leaking for the floor cleaner, which is battery-powered, it slopped out. So there's some, a couple of spots that we really need to address.
Wood chips?
Wood chips for the playground. Yes, it's time to get a van load of wood chips again. Every three or four years, we get a van load. I think it's around 2,500, 2,400, to have a big van load come in. And the town usually helps us spread the wood chips for fall surface for the playground.
Part of our doors, the lobby of the CE wing?
I'm glad you have that list right here. Yes, the, we want to be able to segregate the, when you're in the gym lobby, there are a pair of doors that block the entrance or guard the entrance, so to speak, going into the academic wing. We want to put a mullion between that so those two doors can actually be locked and be more secure in terms of separating the gym space, which often is a much more public space from the school space, particularly in after-hours and like when we have tournaments on the weekend and those kinds of things, to be able to better secure that area and keep our kids safe.
The only other thing I have is the north wing bathroom partitions.
Yes. North wing bathroom partitions, we, the north wing is the old elementary school, the grade school, and that was redone, put a lot of money into it, probably 25 years ago now. Did a lot of insulating and some other things, and partitions were replaced, but it's time now, they're starting to rust out, particularly in the boys' bathroom. Enough said?
Sure. Oh, sorry.
Mr. Lang?
Yes.
Can I just ask you, just from the way you sort of started to speak about your maintenance needs, do you feel as though you don't know exactly what direction to go into, to go in because number one, we're lacking the results of the safety study? Number two, you really could get a better direction if you had the results from an engineering study?
Not the safety study, so to speak. It's more the architectural study about what the long-term plan may be, say, for the old high school. All of that paneling, that green paneling is put on the outside. In fact, if you go and drive by right now, there's one board that's still missing, that the wind blew off. That, seriously, we need to address that. And we might try a short-term repair, and that would be feasible within our budget. Or the architectural study may say it really needs a more comprehensive solution, which would be a much, much bigger figure. I wouldn't want to put small amounts in that we would have to undo or take off in order to do a more comprehensive fix, once we knew more about the structure of the building and what it actually needs and what the life ahead of it is.
That's what I thought I heard in your voice.
Yes.
Okay, Ms. Chris.
For the middle school, I, I think, we've said it a couple of times, the, the age expectancy of a building is 40 years, and things keep breaking at the middle school. As of today, Mr. Tucker came in and told me that they came to inspect the elevator, and we thought we were going to be okay, even though in maintenance, we have to fix the elevator because there's a leak down in the bottom room. I can't tell you all this stuff. There's a leak down there and it needs to be fixed, and it's like 3,200. And, but today, there was something else wrong in the elevator, a circuit board, and we're going to get a quote, Dr. Brown's price, tomorrow. And when we get the quote, I'll send it to you, but we're looking at about a $450 charge. So last year, they kind of rigged around with it and made it work, but this year, they said, no, we can't do that two years in a row. Now you're going to have to have it fixed. Those are the kinds of things that we're trying to project in the future. And I, I don't know what's going to come next. I, I just don't know. But we have elevator repair. The other, one of the things that really needs to change is we have carpeting in the nurse's office, and we've noticed as of late, it needs to be tiled. It, that carpet needs to come up, the floor needs to be redone, and we need tile in there. Enough said on that. We put in for bleacher repair and inspection, and I'm not sure what the cost of that's going to be, but I know that there is extensive bleacher repair needed, both inside and outside for the middle school. Locker room updates. We've talked extensively about making the lockers ADA-approved. Dr. Brown and I threw around some prices, and they're probably not even close. But if you go into the locker rooms, the bottom of the panels, most of them, I'm going to say, are rotting out. They're rusty. They're a safety hazard. Something needs to be done, at least band-aided, if not made up to ADA. Then they definitely need to be fixed somewhat. And then the ancient boiler, and I don't get this one either, but there's a big boiler downstairs, and it's running on one compressor instead of two. What happens is, because of the old mercury switches, which we keep getting passed by, but at some point, those have to be replaced, we have to bring them up to code. And when the boiler, when the compressor loses power, we lose water. You can't flush, you can't run the water. And Mr. Tucker has to go down and keep fooling with it until it starts to come back, which takes approximately 12 hours. So that's something that just has to be done.
So the additional motor that you need, because you need two for that?
Correct.
So in your budget, the budget presently reflects that additional motor?
Yes, or to replace both of them with one high-powered one. I don't know. It's got to be fixed.
And we do or we don't have anything to take care of those rusting lockers at the bottom?
No.
We do not? Because I agree that they're a safety hazard if some kid gets pushed into that.
I think one of the things, when Mr. Tucker and I talked about summer work, along with ceiling tiles and painting and, and taking care of stains on the rug, that kind of stuff, I think one of the things that he's thinking about doing is taking in a sander. Not a wood sander, like a belt sander, but a, a sander that does metal. Not a wood sander, like a belt sander, but a sander that does metal. And at least sanding them down, flattening them out where they're jagged, and repainting them. So at least they're not a safety issue.
Okay. And you don't have tile when you remove the carpet in the nurse's office now? If you just remove that carpet, there's?
No, we don't believe so, because the whole building was carpeting when it was built.
Oh, so it's right on top of this now?
When we pulled up the old carpet and replaced, remember, we had like a three-phase project, and we've done two other three phases. The classrooms still need to be done, but when you rip those carpets up, it's just cement underneath.
And that is or is not in the budget?
That is in the budget.
That is in the budget.
And I guess there's a special kind of tile you're supposed to use that's not porous so that it doesn't absorb bodily fluids.
I'm sure there is. Thank you.
You're welcome.
So if you don't mind, I'm referencing things with my laptop, so I'm going to stay seated if it's okay. For our maintenance, we broke this into two categories. We examined our existing operational costs, like building and ground supplies, electrical supplies, maintenance supplies, plumbing, and basically took the current cost for this year and carried it over, which is captured in the budget. Similar to what you've heard from the other two principals, we originally did a review of the needs of the building independently, and then I know that you and Dr. Brown and others came, and you had concerns as well as things that needed to be addressed. And those items were things such as field poles for the baseball field, cameras at the high school, bleacher repairs, as Karen had mentioned, replacing the fence leading down to the softball field, and so on. But once we've moved forward in the budget process and looked at a comprehensive look and having that, the results of that study guide us on what should be done, those items I just listed to you became low priority and have not been included. An example would be the cameras. Joel and I took what we thought would be our needs, but that's not necessarily what TRC might have thought would be best. So we waited and decided it'd be best to hear from the professionals on what their assessment is for our camera needs. So those items are not included in the high school's budget in that category.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any further questions about?
Joel, you could correct me. Didn't we have someone come back and look at all of our bleachers? Or is that just here in the grade school where they fixed them?
Yeah, we had the middle school, high school done this year. It was in the budget. And a lot of what's being referred to is the report that we now have.
So that's a report that has prices about what needs to be fixed? No estimates?
There's not estimates on some of them. How would they, Dr. Brown, we're missing some information still from that, correct? We have worked diligently to get that information from them, and it has been very quality.
One of the things that we have slowed down is the look at things the board had asked us to make part of a study, including bleachers, fields, and expanded the scope of that look. So I pulled those things from the operating budget, anticipating that would be part of an architectural study.
So, Mr. Creach, did they, you made it a priority that we get the cameras in the high school?
It is a priority. TRC has mentioned that as well, but we just don't have an assessment as to what cameras we need. We're going to have to probably change the configuration of the main office when it comes to monitoring who is trying to gain access to that main entrance. There's potential for that to have to change. Those are all things that TRC was going to take into consideration. They have a format that they've, based on the building and the size and it's, the way it's organized, the form. So we basically decided, instead of us amateurs, just educators trying to decide what was appropriate, we were waiting for TRC to make that recommendation.
Okay, so you're waiting, can you expect something from TRC? It might not come in before we finish this budget.
Correct, and there's a part two to that. When we, when TRC spoke with us regarding this, town council members were there, and we're making it very clear that this might be something, would be a comprehensive look, not just from the school's side, but municipally. And so how are we going to, I think, I, at the town council school meeting, they mentioned something like, it might cost a million dollars, but right now, they're thinking, we'll start with a hundred thousand, just as an estimate. I remembered that. So that's another reason why we're not going to go through individually and make a recommendation.
I think I remember that the safety committee, a couple of years ago, made it a priority that we need the schools to get up to date on the camera systems. And I agree with that.
May I use your mic?
Just to add a little more detail to that, I believe there's a meeting April 1st that TRC is going to be conducting in executive session with the school board and the town council. And they'll, they'll be going over their reports for each of the, there are four different reports. The town office is done, the grade school is done, the high school is done, and Karen should have the middle school shortly. And that does have recommendations in it that are prioritized with potential budget figures. Their figures seemed low to me, I was surprised, but they're the experts. But it does, they talk about, you know, access control and cameras and a lot of things in terms of training and protocols and things that don't cost money as well. So that report is complete, and you'll have a chance to meet with TRC on April 1st.
Thank you. More questions?
Yep. I wasn't able to determine what Cintas was costing the district.
What was?
Cintas, it's our uniformed company. There are some questions about the service that they're providing us, and I just didn't know how much that was costing us and if we needed to look into that. I see uniform benefit in facilities and maintenance, that's four-hundred-and-seventy-five dollars, but I don't see like a contract cost for that.
I would need to get you that information. I don't know off the top of my head.
I can tell you from doing warrants, it's about forty-nine dollars per year. Per month.
Right, no idea.
You're supposed to say your thought.
Sure.
One of the things that is not a budget item, but I think you raise that policymakers need to have some discussion about, is our recommendation to begin moving from three languages at Central High School to two. And it's as, it's not clear in the budget, but I think it would be disingenuous if I didn't say that's something that you need to talk about. It was recommended by the administrative team because of the light subscription in one of the languages to narrow that to two. And so that being said, I think that the school committee needs to have some discussion about that recommendation.
The two being function, Spanish?
Yes.
Discussion about moving from three down to two foreign languages. So, you know, I could open up Pandora's box, Mrs. Cook, and I'd say, you want to have a?
I can start. I don't think it's a good idea, and it's not only my own personal previous investment in the Latin program, but I think for a small school, we offer a great program. And I think to go over two languages and not offer a classical language is going to make a difference in when people look at our school. We are small, and we can't always offer everything the large schools do, but we do a pretty darn good job. I also think that you could still cover a Latin program. I know it's sixty percent for next year, but if we were willing to keep that sixty percent, or even fifty percent, I think you could keep a Latin program. The other thing is, often in the past, it went from when a teacher retires, that's the program that gets cut. We don't want to have a French teacher next year. I'm back in the classroom because there wasn't a French teacher available to sell the class at school. There just aren't a lot of these teachers out there. So I think it's to our advantage to continue to attract people to this town. People with little kids come for one reason, people with older kids come for other reasons. And I just think that having only French and Spanish would, what is it, a disadvantage that we're not at right now, offering a classical language? And I don't think that either of those languages have to be a full-time job. You might even be lucky enough to, you know, I remember when one principal wouldn't be named close, you're no use to the district if you didn't have multiple certificates. But I think, I just think it would be, you know, you might find someone who could do some French and something else. You have already a teacher who can do some Latin and something else. I just hate to see us go to two languages when we've been able to offer three. And a school across the river offers three. I just think that, I would like to see us still with three.
Thank you.
I'd like to see us also look at this collaborative that we have with the other two high schools. Because one door north has got German. We're talking, I firmly believe the Spanish has to be one of them. I don't have any problems with that, it's Latin, but you. But I also would like to see Chinese offered. I mean, I'm sorry, I think the French is okay, but that, I wouldn't be spending money on French. I don't think that's a language that, a language of the world. And that's what I'm looking at. Now, I think Spanish is a good likely, whether, not within a lifetime, but within my kids' lifetime, that Spanish will be, unless it's popular. There's English spoken in this country. And that's, I think we should get ready for that. But I, I think we should have a quick discussion of it. I don't know if we should just call it two. And I understand where you're coming from.
So looking at some areas of high schools, and I think what Mrs. Cook says is correct, if families that are moving in, it could very well be looking at our high schools or looking at our schools and what we have to offer. Monmouth offers five years of French and Spanish. Spurs Mountain, four, French and Spanish. Haldale offers five of French, Japanese, and Spanish. And they have Japanese all the way up through, too. They're very lucky in that respect. And Miranda Cook offers four of French, five of Spanish, and five of German. So even though Latin may not be one of them, I know it's been a very popular program here in Linda. Numbers are dwindling, but so is our population. I just do worry about what we have to offer. I know that there was some concern that even Spanish might have been cut some. And what would that look like for those kids, especially youth grade, that were hoping to get five years of it? I'm glad it's not happening, but, or this is not happening now. But it is a concern when you're looking to increase our programs or at least offer a variety to students. Maybe we can get creative and piggyback and offer some with, if you have multiple teachers that are qualified to do that, but I don't know what the solution might be. I don't know if we necessarily can afford a full-time one, but what might a part-time or creative scheduling look like?
Can I also add that Latin is the only language our school can offer safety program? Need to see that go as well.
If I might, I was remiss in the budget presentation. I had dropped French from full-time to point six. We have a point-six French, point-six Latin, David, is that right?
Four.
Point-four Latin?
It's two, it's point-six. Oh, it's point-six, too.
Phase it out. You'd have to have three classes next year.
What did he say?
To phase it out, you'd have to have three classes next year. But is it now a point-five then, three out of six?
Rather, five.
Three out of five. So that's not a point-six then, next year?
No, we would have to have three out of five. That's point-six, so we'd be phasing out four, point-four, two classes.
Right.
So you're phasing, you're eliminating?
Right, so, but it's a point-six Latin position for next year?
Yes.
Yes, which?
Eliminating point.
Right, and, and I talked to Dr. Brown about how I really think that you could still offer Latin one and incorporate the rest of the students in that arrangement, because the numbers are small. But I think you could still offer the four years if that was the direction we wanted to go in.
Can I ask a question, Mrs. Chris? How hard would it be to survey your eighth-grade kids to find out what they'd like to take as freshmen? And Dave, the same question for you. Kids who are thinking about a language next year, how hard is it to survey them now?
Very easy for the middle school.
That survey probably shouldn't happen until we do the academic counseling, which we're starting. So students need to learn about the programs that we offer and the courses before I would want to do a survey, so they'd have a good sense of what it offers and whether they're interested, which would mean after April vacation.
We wouldn't, or the school committee, wouldn't have that information before the meeting with the town council, before they start writing on the warrant articles?
You can, we could survey, but it's not going to be a well-informed survey for students. They wouldn't have had a chance to have that after the council first.
Thank you.
Majesty, as eighth graders, I think they're going to take whatever their parents tell them they're going to take. That's what happens. My mother's making me take, that's what we hear. I don't want to be in that level, my mother's making me take it. So I...
Remind me, foreign languages are the requirement for graduation, or no?
No longer.
And that was changed with?
This year.
Thank you. To weigh in. One correction, Jenna. The eighth grader will not be in Spanish this year.
Correct.
It's not offered this year. In order for Spanish three to be offered at the high school, the middle school program must discontinue.
Thank you.
Okay, so I would, I would love for us to have a study to open in school. I would love to. I'd love to offer everything. I think that Dr. Brown looked at our enrollment numbers and made some hard decisions that we can't do everything we need to do to part infrastructure for our buildings for safety and have classes that run with five students. We can't do it. So unfortunately, we have to reduce positions because we don't have the classrooms full. We don't even have the classrooms half-full. So by saying that French is going to point-six, it's not taking away, it's just combining two French-one classes, so that there's one section of perhaps French-one with now fourteen students instead of two with seven. I think that's really important for people to understand. Second, one of my concerns when we first discussed last week was making sure that students who know as a freshman that they want a, to take a medical path, those are the students who are going to feel loss in Latin the greatest because those students are interested in having that basis or, you know, medical terms. You can take online classes or in virtual high school, there are a plethora of them. I'm concerned we don't have enough seats. I know that you can request more seats through Western Maine Education Collaborative, but do we have money in the budget to request those seats? That's, that was another concern, excuse me, concern of mine. So I'd like to make sure that we are doing that.
Can I stop you again, the answer to that? Because I think Mr. Creach spoke to that one other time. Do we have something like seventeen seats and we haven't used three? Oh, right, I'm sorry.
We get six.
Did I get that totally wrong?
You did. We get three seats a semester, and for the past four years that I've been involved, we have used all three seats every semester, and we have asked for more from the Western Maine Education. And some years we've got them, and some we have not.
So do you know what our proposed budget reflects for requests for seats?
So, do you know what our proposed budget reflects for requests for seats?
I do not. Usually the Western Maine, the student gets in touch with either the superintendent or the building school to see what they want. If we kept it status quo, we would have had three seats a semester, a total of six for the year. I'm not sure if they have done their, hold us for next year yet or not. Not sure if they've asked.
So is there a way I can get any more specific information for that cost?
Jeff, are you, can, we, this year purchased the Western Maine Collaborative through Title Two?
Either, either Two or Five. I think it's Five, I guess Title Five.
And I don't think they break out for us what the seats cost, that must be.
No, that's just a, just a membership to the organization.
Because what we do have in the budget, in the current budget and the proposed budget, right then, is the three hundred dollars for gifted tuition. Yes, because we, I didn't know what it was, and that, I was told that it was to buy seats as part of that, part of the tuition for students who need that. So that, going for a chicken check to make sure we have that in. Though, VHS is not a G T and talented program. The students that use it, they don't have to be a G T, they're not, if they identify a G T, it really has nothing to do with that. It's basically a, a request from the guidance center to the student that cannot fit it in their schedule or whatnot, and then they get a VHS online class. I know how much each seat is worth each year, based on how many seats they request and how full the classes are, but they range from two fifty to about three hundred a seat per year. David?
So there are other models that some of the school districts use to gain seats for VHS. The school district I just came from, we had a teacher that taught a VHS course, because of that, we had twenty-five seats. So, there are other models that are out there to gain access to the seats, as opposed to just having to purchase for however many kids are going to sign up. But it would mean that one of our staff members would have to be trained, and then that would be, it doesn't necessarily have to be something that's taught during the school day, it's oftentimes something that'd be outside of the school day because it's an online course. But somebody would have to be willing to be trained for that, and then that's one other way to gain access to additional VHS courses. And VHS has, as Chris was saying, a wealth of online courses.
For middle school and high school?
Yep, both.
So that, I, one of the conferences that I went to, not this year, last year, for the school board, NSNA had virtual high school there, and that was information I had learned and shared with board at the time. I feel like we, we need to do that. I mean, especially if we're looking at some staffing numbers where we might have a class of three people, that perhaps that, that teacher, and I know we need to go through the training, but perhaps we can be creative. I know we want our staff there full-time, our teachers there full-time, but if we don't have the students, perhaps if they taught a virtual high school class for the district as one of their classes, we get those seats at no additional cost. So, I think it's worth looking into, I think we're at the point where we need to start taking advantage of those things because of our enrollment numbers. I mean, they dropped significantly this year. And as, as it was displayed in technology, most of our costs come with, you know, come with our salary and benefits. So, I think we've, unfortunately, programs are going to have to go by the wayside in order for us to balance our budget. We asked Dr. Brown to come in at a certain cost, and we're already adding stuff onto it. And so then, you know, that was how she found safety, was to make these productions and these programs that their enrollment is really low.
I'll weigh in on the foreign spoken and unspoken language situation, even though I have a really good friend, Mrs. Cook, that put forty-three years of her life into foreign languages, and most recently, the majority of that in Latin. I really do believe in Latin for folks going on in any of the sciences. However, we did ask Dr. Brown to come in and help fix the system. I get, I get a little frustrated when folks suggest that we just have to hunker on down and get more flexible and figure out more shortcuts. That's what we've been doing now for several years, and there's only so many possible solutions. I'm sorry to say that I think because of student attendance to some of our foreign language programs, that we do need to cut those programs down. At the same time, I want to try to make it available to our students that are highly motivated, that they can go ahead and take these classes using technology. So I too would ask for a review of the amount of money that's going into the technology we make some of these online courses available, and make sure that the estimated number of spots, that we try to coincide what we suspect would be student desires, that we try to coincide that with numbers of seats and possible classes. Was that, was that two of twos?
I get pretty, I'm going to need some help.
Well, if any of our principals, you know, probably Mr. Creach the most, has knowledge of a student of two or three or four or five that are just passionate about continuing their Latin, if we can investigate the amount of money it would take, and whether or not it was really, as far as reality goes, we would be able to offer that, so that we could get that into a budget. I think that might be a good idea. Did I get any lessons?
No. Kids in Latin who are happy now, if their passion to continue, that's built in, they can continue.
Well, I'm, I just use that as an example.
But do you, okay, but it's.
You know, if we knew we had kids coming up, just as a planning purposes, that additional money could be reflected in the proposed budget, as opposed to, in September, we all of a sudden find that we have a student that we would really like to serve, so we don't have the money to do it.
If I might, Mrs. Cook is right, we felt as an administrative team that we had some responsibility to the kids who are enrolled in Latin currently. And so when Dave talks about phasing it out, we're talking not offering it to kids who are not enrolled now. So the kids who are in, whether it's Latin one or all the way up through, would finish in that language, but we wouldn't enroll new students.
I only use Latin as an example, I'm sorry, it was a terrible example. Yeah. So, I just.
Well, that's the reality.
I mean. No, all I was trying to say is, let's see if we can figure out where the kids' passions are, I don't care what.
Right, but I have to say, my experience with online, or even virtual high school courses with a spoken language, it's pretty hard. It is easier to do with Latin. And the other thing I was thinking also, kids want to speak the foreign language, but some of them don't want to speak it, and you go to French and Latin, and, and French and Spanish, and every kid has to learn to speak that language. I also think when Spanish was put into the middle school for the eighth grade only, I think that hurt the other two languages, because it wasn't really an equitable situation.
I have no doubt that you're absolutely correct, but what I do know is that we're trying to add other positions, and the best way to fund these other positions are with cuts that are justified according to student numbers. I'd also like to piggyback back on what Mr. Petroski said, and I hate to agree with Mr. Petroski in public, but at a particular time, I find myself having to do that, and that I think that, it's just my opinion, that because of the way world, world economies are going, and the way the population of the world is moving around, that the two, if we were to get it down to two foreign languages, that they should be Spanish and Chinese. So, oh, Mr. Creach.
Can we get that in the notes that you read?
No, you know, there's nobody taking notes, nobody will know.
There's a couple of things that I've heard.
That's true, I do get all that now.
There's a couple of things that I've heard mentioned that I think we should investigate and explore regardless of whether it's tied to world languages or not, and we're trying to do this, high schools all throughout the nation are doing this. One is trying to get students dual-enrolled in college courses. There are a lot of schools that do that, our departments, our content areas could look at existing courses and agreements with colleges, so that students could either take it at the college, take it online, or one of our teachers could be teaching it at our school, and they would get credit for it at the college and credit for it at school. And if they go to a University of Maine system college, they would receive that credit towards, that's one thing. The second piece is looking at existing programs in neighboring schools, and seeing if we can come up with some type of agreement. If we're offering Latin and somebody else isn't, maybe they bring students to us, and maybe we go to their school because they have Chinese. That's a second piece. And then the third piece is the piece you already mentioned, which is technology. That takes time to put those things in place and to get those agreements, but that's something that some of the other content areas have already been talking about outside of foreign language or world languages. And I think we should explore it regardless of the decision we make with world languages. The other piece I think is important is to note that we have, these numbers were reducing when it was a graduation requirement. They're not reducing because it's been taken away. These numbers have started to diminish when it was a requirement for one credit in a foreign language. And the last piece is, we have graduation requirements, four credits of English, three and a half for science, three for social studies, three for math, or three and a half for math, excuse me, and we have three FTEs for those content areas. Students have to take at least three credits, up to four credits, in four years. Three teachers to do those content areas. We now have three teachers for world languages. So if those program, it was my charge from Dr. Brown to look at those numbers, if those are robust numbers, and the classes are filled like in the other content areas, it would have never been brought to you as a potential reduction. But those numbers aren't robust, it's spread out pretty thin. And I did provide for you the enrollment data over the last ten years. So, we're willing to explore all of those things I just mentioned to you as possibilities to serve students' needs in every content area.
I just need one more comment, and that comment is, you are losing a French teacher. And, you know, you may find one, you may not. And you still have a Latin teacher that is willing to teach, and so, the pattern with her up until now has always been become a language. I saw it happen with German, I saw it happen with French, a teacher retires and you get the languages replaced. And it's a terrible thing to do to the kids in the language. I took, got a lot of kids in Latin because there was no German for them to take it, they weren't really friendly about it, but they came. One other possibility would be to, I know the French has more numbers, but you could think about phasing out the French if, and keeping the Latin out, that's another alternative to explore. And, but that's, and that's all I'm going to say about it. I know it will come across that, I don't want to see the program go because it was my program. But I do believe that Latin offers something, modern languages offer a lot too, but because the speaking takes up so much time. For example, in Spanish one or in French one, you might get to the past tense in the first year. In Latin, you do six tenses in the first year, you do active, passive voice, all these things come up in these other languages in the second and third year, because you don't have the speaking component. And the amount of critical thinking skills that kids have to build to learn Latin is pretty incredible. It's a challenging language, but it's like a puzzle. And the kids that I've had come back to me, it hasn't been, because they've been studying Latin, but Latin, what they learned in Latin has floated over, and I just have to tell you this other story, not to toot my own horn, but my sister-in-law lives in Orno, in retirement community, and there's a lot of University of Maine professors, and she happened to mention who I was, that I was a Latin teacher, and one of the women who lives there now, retired from Orno, said, she sent me such great students, she teaches such great students over the years, I always heard about her, me and me. And so, you know, the fact that these kids are taking something they learned in that class and using it in all these different places, is something that happens all the time with all the Latin teachers that I know in the state, and I know many of them. So, but I'm going to stop talking about it now, and, you know, I understand that decisions have to be made for the financial benefit of the district, and so, I'm just, no, we're going to do what the best thing is going for.
Any more specifics? Any more specifics? Because before we go, I would just like to dig into the numbers in the front of the, of our budget book, while everybody's here to help us a little bit, so that we walk away from here, and knowing what we're asking for, asking the community for, knowing that these numbers will change, depending on the outcome of some of our previous conversations. So, everybody's going to want to know, Dr. Brown, how much, how much more money are we asking for, for just a regular K-12 program, not including adult ed or nutrition? How much in additional funds over the last year, even with the proposed cuts that we've now started to discuss? Even with the proposed cuts? Okay.
To be clear, proposed cuts, not proposed ads from the school committee tonight?
Just me. Your original proposed cuts, and I already said, we know the numbers will, are likely to change with.
Okay, so I'm working for the school budget summary and review calculation, I think I got that page?
Yep.
Articles one to eleven doesn't, do not include adult ed, school nutrition, that would be an increase of three twenty-two, eight sixteen, over current operating budget.
And can anybody remember here what a mill is?
I was just going to ask that.
It's around four, if I remember the conversation with Mr. Cross. When we met with the town council, whatever, they went over their capital improvements list, maybe it was half a mill or four?
I'm thinking in my head, the number is either six or eight.
Yeah, I think a mill is eight.
But Kristen thinks you might have.
I was thinking six, five.
I don't think.
All right. See, valuation.
Yeah. I was trying to see if I found that in general.
Of course, I understand that our valuation went up this past year, which is going to skew last year's number a bit.
Did Brian pass that?
I think he did.
Brian did pass it out.
Right at the bottom of the sheet.
I'm smoking, I'm, I'm, I'm. I'll keep looking if I find it then.
Okay. Are you getting close?
No.
All right. So, I'd like to know what portion of a mill that we're talking about with our current town valuation. So, just so everyone is clear, then, we're talking about, with the, with the cuts that Dr. Brown and administrators have already made, we're still talking about an increase in Articles one through eleven of three hundred twenty-two thousand eight hundred and sixteen. All right? So then, let's move on to adult ed. We're asking for no increase in adult ed.
Correct.
Correct. And then for nutrition, we're asking for an increase of a hundred and twenty-eight The hundred and twenty-eight thousand, within the hundred and twenty-eight thousand is payment of, partial payment of the debt, as well as recalculating what the year-to-year number needs to be.
The proposed two hundred twenty-three thousand for school nutrition makes up the audited difference of seventy-two thousand. audited difference of seventy-two thousand and change for school year two thousand and eighteen, a projected loss per school year two thousand and nineteen, and an anticipated contribution, the total two twenty-three, for the operating budget for school year two thousand and nineteen, twenty. That would, and again, I, when I was raised, are projections, I don't know if they will be...
Oh, there, I think a hundred and twenty, sorry.
The difference is the difference. So, the line is up roughly forty-five percent over the current year.
But that includes...
That would bring the debt to zero.
Right. Okay. So this proposed then of two hundred and twenty-three include, would clear out the debt as well as take care of the increase that should have been put back in there last year and was not.
Yes.
Yes. Okay, everybody's clear on that? Um, so then I guess the, the, um, okay, I think I answered most of my questions, except I'd love to know about the lower...
The question I had was that we are proposing to have our own auditorium. How do we fund that through our budget? Or is it, or is there an amount already in there?
There's an amount that's already in there. I increased the audit line, it's in the business portion of Article Six, Business Office. Uh, I don't know if you can, as a department of the town, have a different auditor. I don't think so. What I believe you can do is, I have heard that the town council is supportive of putting that out to bid again. And from what I have been told by the town manager, that will happen this spring.
So, um, just let me respond, Joe. I wasn't familiar that we had decided to try to get our own auditorium. You know, we tried to do that last year and the town council was very clear that they put the, that's to do that. Um, I read the charter and it looks pretty great. I think that if they wanted to let us, that they could, according to the charter, where they could not. So, um, we chose not to take on that battle last year. But it would appear as though if other people would bid, we may have another pickup. Nobody wants to say until the town's audit and the school's audit probably turned in. My whole...
Hold on, Brad.
If, if I'm right, I increased the audit line by four thousand dollars. It is, it was eight and I raised it to twelve.
Did you prepare that to what we previously paid? Because I know at least one of those last few years, we had quite a big bill for the auditor. Do we want to prepare for that?
The only bill I'm familiar with is the audit bill for the current year, which was six and change. Um, the auditor told us when we met with him February twenty-seventh that they put two hundred and something hours in and did not indicate that we'd get billed for that. I would have something to say if he billed us for that.
Jenny, I found the, um, it hurt, except it doesn't say, it says that his total first look estimate was eight hundred and eighteen thousand. But it doesn't say what that would equate to. And I do write down what I've said was helpful in that. So, thank you for your efforts. Appreciate it. Whoops, there was a question. I, I think, once we find out the mill rate, um, so, you know, trying to prepare for the vote on the budget as to whether or not to pass this on to the town council, I need for you folks to be really sure that you're comfortable about asking the town for an additional four hundred and fifty thousand, eight hundred and sixteen and fourteen cents over the last year. But, well, if, go.
If I might, that number went up appreciably tonight, at least by, you're looking at my notes, uh, at least twenty thousand for legal fees, five for streaming, that's twenty-five. Uh, I'm not clear. I think that's it in terms of adds, so it's up twenty-five, so that's four seventy-five, not at four fifty, unless you want something else to add or not.
Um, I think the admins and Dr. Brown have done an incredible job, thank you, all, of putting this together. I one hundred percent support sending this to the town council, like the town, where they're realizing that we can't keep band-aiding things.
We can't what?
Keep band-aiding things. Um, there are some things that need to be fixed, they need to be done, they need to be changed. Um, and we need to bring this forward to them, um, with the discussions of what it's going for, obviously, um, and then go from there. Um, they can cut and we'll be back looking at this again, or they can approve it, or they can increase it. Um, but this is, I'm, I'm hopeful. Um, but, you know, this is, again, you know, I don't feel like there's anything in here that is over-the-top needs or, um, things that we can't, uh, live without, or things like, you know what I mean? So I, I feel very confident, um, with taking that number two with them and to the voters as well.
And of course, this is on top of asking the town to do a one-time payout for about a hundred and twenty-five dollars worth of engineering study on our three buildings and fields.
Again, that, that's an investment.
On their three buildings and fields.
Yes, I was just gonna say that's an investment.
It still comes in there, but it's all free. Well, ultimately, yes. Sure. We'll talk about it. Any other thoughts?
I'm not afraid to ask. I sat here too many years when we were asked to cut and cut and cut, and I think this is a budget that's really tight. And the things, the things that are, I mean, aside from the, uh, food service budget, which nobody, you know, that's just one of those things that happens, the rest of it, there are positions that we need, like the full-time assistant principal in middle school and like the director of the department, because otherwise, a lot of it doesn't make sense. We are at a point where we need, um, different, maybe a different kind of direction than we've had. We need a more cohesive approach, system-wide to everything, and we're poised with this budget to get there, to start to get there. And, um, I think we should tell them what we need and why we need it. And, um, yeah, like Jen said, in a perfect world, maybe they'd say yes and have more. And I know some people will say, flat budget, flat budget, but it isn't realistic considering the needs for our students.
No, it's not realistic, we have to remember that too. It's not realistic for the town either. And they know that they have band-aided things for a number of years and they're having the same difficulty that we're having. So it's a double difficulty for them. It's gonna be hard on everybody. But I, you know, I need for you to be comfortable, or rather, we all need for all of us to be comfortable in these numbers and be able to justify them in Hannafords with a true heart, so to speak. So if you have any concerns or questions, I need for you to ask them now. We would really like to be able to vote on this budget rather than pushing an additional date where two of you cannot be in attendance for during the next meeting.
I'd just like to, I, I'm not trying to remind people that we need to get those who support quality education to come forth and support, we do need them. But, and I think this community will respond favorably to a vote on a budget like this. But just in fact, oh, the German teacher, Reed Field, was recently elected to the state legislature, representing a part of customers on the education committee. And he posted a Facebook-type of survey regarding the legislation to increase the minimum for teachers salaries to forty thousand dollars. And it was defeated. But the comments were pretty much reflective of the fact that people still are struggling. There's a lot of claims out there on the money. And also some of the comments about teachers and work schedules, et cetera, were not extremely favorable. And so that, our group is there, there's no question about it. And I know that he personally was very surprised. He thought that he would get a very favorable vote. And he did. So he was saying, what do I do? Do I represent these peoples, being my constituents, of which not, but in any case, I just thought it was an interesting survey.
I think it's interesting that with all of the cuts that we're suffering through this year, personnel cuts, we're still this amount of money in addition to last year's budget asking the town for. That's, we've, we've lost services for our children, for the parents in our community, and it still reflects a, a pretty big increase. So, um, that's all I have to say.
So one of the increases that I haven't given you, I don't think I was clear, the budget as presented is three point eight, including the food service, school nutrition program increase as well. So three point eight, I don't think is a reasonable request to present to your constituents.
Three point eight.
Present.
Yes.
Increase. Yes. As I said earlier, that does include the two twenty-three for the school nutrition program. Kristen?
Can you, um, tell us, what was the health insurance premium increase?
I have estimated a ten percent increase for health insurance. I don't have the rates yet, and I don't think I'll have them before you go to the town council on the eighth of April.
Okay. Do you need a stop wall vote on anything? Do you need a stop wall vote on language teachers?
I'm going in some direction with that. The budget as presented has a point six, French teacher, point six Latin teacher. So part of that is money, but part of that's policy, because that presumes that the options for students entering two thousand and nineteen, twenty are two languages, unless they're enrolled in the phase out of Latin.
Kristen?
I'm in support of that. And I am, as asked, to look into making sure that we have enough of the virtual high school seats so that students who are interested in taking them, that they have options, that those would be open to any student taking the course that we now offer for options.
Thank you. Budget clarified that. So to Mr. Petrowski's example of Mandarin, if I'm an eighth grader and want to take Mandarin through virtual high school, we want to make sure that that is available to a student.
If we end up having the number of seats, I think that that would be an ideal scenario. Though, I don't know if we have a policy. I know we have a procedure in place of who gets priority of taking those classes. Um, and I'm sure Mr. Preach and Mrs. Smith could respond to that, but better than I can. But from my understanding, it's, they don't offer it for classes that Winthrop offers, unless it doesn't fit to their schedule and it's needed for graduation. So then it would be a, a class that wouldn't, so Mandarin would fit in that definition, but not for an eighth grader, because right now we only have enough seats for our high school students, from what I'm understanding.
I perhaps could have, but I was saying this would be for incoming freshmen, not for eighth graders.
Oh, okay. It, as long as the procedure is stated as such. But I don't know what the written procedure is right now for virtual high school classes, if it, if it eliminates, um, certain people from, you know, like our seniors given priority over freshmen, you know, that sort of thing. And if that is something that at the high school that they want to make sure that every student has available to them, then yeah, we're gonna have to increase it by, you know, thirty seats or whatnot perhaps. And then if we're going to do that, then let's look at having one of our teachers be trained to teach it so we get those free. So that's why I was gonna leave it up to the experts to talk about, you know, our needs and how extensive the high school wants to get in offerings. But for right now, if, I'm talking about Latin specifically, that if we want to make sure that that is open to our students in the future, then if a student wants to take Latin, then maybe that becomes the priority. And then we need just immediately to make sure that we have enough seats to support them.
Mrs. Cook?
Um, I'm not in favor of a plan of, so, well, I am in favor of a plan that for point six next year, we include Latin one and figure out a way to fit in the other students. And then hope that, and then see what happens at the end of that year and reevaluate the languages that aren't Spanish. Because I think Spanish needs to stay.
Thank you. Mr. Petrowski?
First of all, I would glad to, Principal Preach mentioned one of my favorite topics, which is, we've got to connect with the colleges. We've got to have our students graduating with college credit. And if they could complete a full year, that would be even better. I also would glad to see that the legislature is...
I just want your comment right now.
Well, I just, I just want to say that we, we may have to consider what we're doing in what I would traditionally call the home ec, uh, industrial arts area too, because there is a push there to take and make sure the schools are providing those types of courses to, to students at some point, although it may not be necessarily a high school's, uh, appropriations, it could end up in the middle school. But I do support, uh, making movement in the, uh, language arts, keeping Spanish in particular, I'm not that crazy about French. And I do think that if students want to take Latin, we ought to provide it for them. In my family at least, and with their kids, that I used to teach with debate teams and everything, Latin was the subject, they still talk about Latin. And they also talk about the fact that Latin was the basis of all these other languages. And it helped them a lot when they get to college.
So, um, just so I'm clear, are you in favor of the current proposed budget?
I, I do think that, I do think that we should, uh, offer a freshman Latin as one of the offerings.
But we have, we have the positions down to, what, one point two total in foreign language?
Foreign language, point six, one, and point four, right? Point, no, two point two.
But it's, it's Spanish.
One. One point six and point six.
So, um, the proposed budget has foreign language coverage down to two point...
Two.
Two. Are you in favor of maintaining that because it had an impact on the foreign language?
Does it include freshman, a freshman in Latin?
Can I ask a clarifying question of the school committee? I don't know if we've had this discussion before, but do you ever set a minimum class size? In other words, right now we have kids in Latin classes separately of four and five students. So if we, what is the minimum number of students that we need to have to offer that language? Or, or any language for that matter?
Or any subject.
So, so, well, I, I think that you looked for a policy, right? There were, and there's something in the contract that we were looking for. That, that was recommended class sizes?
One minute.
Like, oh, that's what it goes. That's in the contract.
In the under-ration, it doesn't talk about minimum numbers.
Right. So that's the only place we found anything about numbers, as I recall, when we were looking at it a couple of weeks ago. And that was in the contract, and that's a max, just a suggested number. So, as far as I know, we don't have a policy that takes care of minimums, and maybe we need to consider doing that, um, at some point in time.
I mean, I, you know, I respect Mrs. Cook, she has a tremendous reputation. I, as you know, look at data. I, as you know, look at data. And I think that you, as a group of policymakers, needs to take a hard look at a philosophy that regardless of how many students want it, you're going to offer it, period. Because you're really at that point now. You've got classes that are running at the high school with three kids, four kids, five kids. And each time you run a class, you allocate .20, .20 FTE to that group of students. And eventually, you've reached, in my opinion, and I am new here, you've reached the limit of how often you can do that. And if the decision is, "We'll do that regardless," then I've gotta go through my budget and make some reductions in other places. And part of my job that I was asked to do when I was hired was to set you up for the long term. And if you're going to tell me, kind of, the long term is we offer these classes irrespective of how many kids are in them, then that is a different marching order for me than saying, "We have to have a budget that's balanced. We're missing services. We gotta be conscious of our taxpayers and what they can bear." And so I need clarification there, because if it's, "We're gonna have three languages, period. That's it," then I've got a different... I've gotta look at this differently.
Yeah, something... Well, would you let, I wanna go around and get first comments from everyone. And Jen is next, and I'm last.
Along the same lines of what Ms. Shumway said, I think it's important to, if we can, obtain more seats somehow, if there are some kids that want to take that. My question is, what does that look like? From virtual high school? Is it completely online on their own? Or is it still during the school day, and there's a ed tech that monitors the classroom? Is there still a body in a room with these kids? Or I don't even know what that really looks like overall.
I would ask... Mr. Preach, can you respond to that?
So typically, it's not like online courses that are set up for credit recovery or summer programs. Typically, when you offer that as a high school, you have personnel in place to support somebody who's doing credit recovery. Or online courses for VHS, that's not the case. This is, you know, what we've found with students who take that, you really have to be self-motivated. You really have to be able to... You have a timeline to complete various things for the course. And it's just like when you go to college. You don't show up for class, or you don't do things. They're not holding your hand to make it get done. It's up to you to be independently able to accomplish those things. So we would not have in place at the school, it's almost impossible, if there's 25 different courses, to have a resident expert in each of those things as a resource. Students are basically working on it independently. And there's other online courses other than VHS that you can explore, but those also don't have an in-house resource.
Okay, so you're in support of the current proposed budget? I couldn't repeat some of what people have said, and I don't want to do that. So I'll just bring in a different point. Way back when we were having the conversation about whether to continue to look into consolidation or not, I tried to make it really clear that if we didn't... If we chose to not look into consolidation any further, we still have to figure out a way to keep our school system going. And that would entail some very difficult decisions. We asked Dr. Brown. We gave her our list, that everyone here contributed to, our list of objectives. And one of those objectives was to make this school system sustainable. She's attempted to do that, and that is still with an increase of $450,000 over last year's budget. We have to make these difficult decisions. And as much as I have said for 45 years that I want our school system to be known as the best school system in the whole state of Maine, I still want that. But we have to do it within what we're given for reality. All right? And that means making miserable decisions like this one. So to wrap this up, I am in support of the current proposed budget as Dr. Brown and administrators have presented it. I don't want to put too many more constraints on that because I think that we're starting to take away from what our professionals are hired to do. I don't think, as I look out here, that there's a professional that we have in Winthrop that would, if confronted with a child that said, "I want to do this online course. I know that I'm one of those few children that could motivate myself to do well in a situation like that, as opposed to a classroom situation," that our administrators wouldn't work as hard as they could to make that opportunity available. But we all have to realize that those online courses would be successful for a really highly motivated individual. So, bottom line, I'm in support of this budget as it's been proposed with the cuts in there, which is the only way we're going to get any of the other positions that we've pared away in the past that will allow our central office to function. So I think then, Dr. Brown, anybody here can correct me if I'm wrong, I think you have a majority that agrees with the foreign language situation as presented in this budget.
Okay, thank you.
Right? I didn't misspeak? Okay.
Can I comment on the class size?
On performance? Oh, flashback to that.
So to, looking at what Mr. Preach created for the school committee, looking at enrollment, I would hate to say, you know, put a certain number on it that ends up binding or, you know, tying the hands of the guidance department, being able to schedule students. So I'm gonna defer to the experts in the buildings to kind of determine a minimum. But to me, it looks like the magic number is seven. We have a lot of classes that have seven students in it. Some of our intensive classes have fewer than that. And so I'm gonna leave that discussion up, too, because maybe it's more appropriate for our intense classes to have fewer numbers, but maybe it's not. I mean, the reality is that we have classes that have three students in them. I don't know of any school that runs a class with three students in it. Not even a private school. Independent studies could be created in those situations. So that's why I'd like to defer to the administrators to kind of set, maybe recommend, a minimum enrollment for a class to be run. And then maybe in place of that, that teacher might be the advisor for independent studies. And so any student who has an independent study would meet with that student and get guidance or something. Be creative. We're a small district. We're not, we didn't consolidate. We decided not to. So we have to figure out how we're gonna make this municipal school district run with our limited resources. So that means not running the school the way it always is run. So that's my opinion.
Just sort of piggyback on it and just come at it from a different direction. Probably, probably 12, 15 years ago, it was decided that the Garden of Eden number for teachers, at least in the high school, was to carry a load of 80 students. And at the time, we didn't have a real lot of students. Teachers, they had only that load. But if, I mean, if indeed that still is, like I said, the Garden of Eden kind of number, if you divide that by six classes, it might come up with something that might be a minimum. Anything else? Anything from the folks in the audience? Yes?
Hi, a couple days. One is with the VHS and online courses and college courses. There are tons of opportunities out there. Even in the short time I've been here, we've worked with Colby and Bates and UMA and KVCC. We have tons of opportunities for our kids. We just need someone who has delegated that time or somebody who is told, "This is part of your job. Figure out VHS. Figure out free online courses. Figure out independent studies." There's so many things we can do with these kids, but you have to give somebody that directive and somebody that time to manage that. I don't know who that is. That's left up to the experts. And also with the class sizes? Maybe the director of teaching and learning. Also with the class sizes, I would just caution, also putting in a range of years. Some years, we have very low numbers in a certain class. But in a year or two, we might have very different numbers. Could be a scheduling issue. Could be requirements change. Just be careful putting on a lower, you know, a minimum number without also adding a timeframe, because that fluctuates a lot. I think that's it.
Should be a two thing.
That was it. Just the class size and that online course.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Thank you. Just one, real quickly. When you look at class size, I think one of the things that you also have to look at is class size pre-K through 12. If you're gonna allow seven classes of seven at the high school, and I get it if it's an AP class or something, but if it's a French one... But my teachers are having class sizes of 17 to 24, times six. I think you also have to really be careful with equity and those kinds of things when you talk between buildings. And I understand, it's a whole different animal. Grade school, you get those kids all day long. At least, we get to move them on between different teachers in high school is a different animal. But still, I think when you look at what's in the legislature right now, equity is going to be an issue that comes up.
I don't think, as a school committee, we want to get ourselves tangled up in creating those numbers. And I think that when we have an extra minute, we'll... You know, from the regular stuff that we have to do this time of this season of the year, we'll ask Dr. Brown to ask you folks, you know, what your recommendations might be. And then we'll tangle with it. Just to get really into trouble, I mean, the last article that I read two years ago really said that, of course, within parameters, class size really makes little difference in how well students perform in the classroom. So that goes against what we all in the trenches think makes any sense at all. That's just so I can get into trouble and have phone calls tomorrow morning. Because I'm so lovely. Okay. Any other comments? We let all these people go home. Thank you.